And rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. It's a nice, warm day. We have minutes to approve of a July 6 meeting that was held here at Monday, July 6 at 10 o'clock. Could I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Make the motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go, Sonny. Thank you. Then we had a selectmen's work session on Wednesday, July 15 at 9:30 here at the Corner Meeting House. Could I have a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll move. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. Trying to help and then I... There you go. There you go. Okay, we'll start with our new business and Kevin, you're here to discuss a drainage on Dearborn Street and other matters. If you could come up to the podium, please, because obviously the ACs are on and we need the microphone so that everyone can hear.
Both of these are working?
Pardon? I'm...
Both of these are working?
No, I think it's just the one on your left, Kevin. The little one.
Okay, well, thank you for allowing me on the agenda today. And I did meet Mr. Anderson, who we're going to talk about 48 Dearborn Street today. So I wanted him to be here so that he could hear what I had to say about the increased drainage problems we have on Dearborn Street. And we met just a week ago and went over some issues and he's taken steps to try to correct some of his erosion problems and seems to be very cooperative. So I didn't want him thinking I was talking behind his back. So I thought it'd be good if he sat here and listened to what I had to say. So as you know, and while I was hoping somebody from Land Use was going to be here because they came out and did a site visit this past week, Rick and Dari, and reviewed the whole drainage situation that's been going on for well over two years now. We've had... We have a very minimal drainage system, I guess is how I would refer to it on Dearborn Street. We have two catch basins that takes care of the whole hill. One on the right side going up the hill and then one on the left side, which is right in front of my property, in front of my pasture, which was put in many years ago and we can't seem to find out who put it in. I've been told anything from... Could have been the state, but I don't believe the state does work on town roads. So I feel as... I can kind of remember seeing an excavator there a lot of years ago, but I was working out of town then, so I didn't see it get installed. But it was installed while I was working out of town. They made an effort to improve it. They did. And over the years, it's helped a lot and it's actually worked. But unfortunately, as you, Chairman Mooney, have told me right in the same room, that things change. Well, you're absolutely right. Eventually, things change and they've changed. So due to heavy cutting on a piece of property above me, which is over 10 acres, the... Let's just say the runoff pattern is bound to change because just common sense tells you that the forest is gone now and that catches the water before it runs off. So whether the same amount of gallons lands on the property, probably does, but it's the speed that it runs off now has changed considerably. And that's been witnessed by many. There's documentation. They have video of it. An ongoing last event, not the big one, but it was big enough. The last runoff event was pretty large. So this, and I'm not even paying attention to my notes that I had, but I'm just winging it. But so I don't want to miss anything. But our biggest problem on that drainage is that it's frozen solid for the last two winters. I've taken pictures of it. I've shared them with... I've made sure that they got forwarded to Gene. I shared them with my planners one night after a planning board meeting and talking about drainage. That, you know, where's that? Actually, somebody I know very well asked me, where's that? And I explained to him where it was. And I'll be perfectly honest, I don't know everything. So I ask people, when I don't know something, I ask people, why do you suppose this keeps freezing? Well, again, it was suggested by some that I put a sewer line in 20-plus years ago when Frankie Clamart was still here. An extension, an eight-inch line into my property. And it was suggested that maybe when I put the sewer line in, maybe I damaged the drainage pipe. But that would have been hard to do because the sewer line in before that drainage was installed. So the drainage is over the top of the sewer line. So we concluded that couldn't be the problem. And so when they installed it, they let it stick out over the brook about three, three-and-a-half feet. So I talked to some people that worked for large companies that might have run across something like this. And one of my friends suggested that, well, maybe it's because the pipe sticks out over the water. It starts to freeze and then just continues to freeze and builds up. But the deal is, when you've got 200 feet of 15-inch pipe that's your whole lifeline for the whole hill and it's froze solid, you no longer have any drainage. The drainage tries to run in the catch basins. It runs down the road, across the road, from both sides. And this winter, I had a pickup at the end of the season. It was one of them storm events where we had some pack on the roads. But also the drainage is frozen, water run across Dearborn Street. And the man lost control. I didn't see it. The neighbor saw it. She seemed even more concerned that he got out of my pasture. And somehow, after working at it, he sheared off a guide wire on one of the biggest poles on Depot Street that goes in two directions. And he managed to get out, but he left some parts there anyway. I still have the mirror on the post. So that was due to, unfortunately, a safety hazard. Drainage, it wasn't working. You can put salt on it, but it's still going to freeze under certain conditions. And that's what happened that day. So I've shared this with, again, some other officials that I intend to build. And I've had my surveyor there the past week. I've got some stuff going on on my property. And he's going to mark my property line, so I know exactly where it is. And I intend to build a stone wall along Dearborn Street, inside my property line, obviously, to keep the vehicles in Dearborn Street and the drainage in Dearborn Street. So I just want the board... I was told by Land Use that I should contact the selectmen. And I talked to Gene months ago about this and said, when things get back to semi-normal, that I would be able to come in and talk and address this. So my only thing is, is all I'd like to see is, obviously, I do believe in the future because now, and I believe there's some responsibility here. But as the drainage comes off the top of the hill, which is about two-tenths of a mile from the top, where it pressed to my lower gate, it exits into 48 Dearborn Street in two places. Which, so when the erosion was happening, just understand, it was coming out of a bank next to his building, going into the town drainage, but it does go right back in his property. So it ends up back in his land. So there's two places, the town... Well, I've heard it was a town drainage. Dearborn Street drainage is the way I'll phrase it, goes into 48 Dearborn Street. And then the third place it comes in is into my property, which is just above my upper driveway, which, again, I've never had an issue with it. It's not a lot of water that comes in there. I put in 20-plus years ago a 15-inch culvert under my upper driveway. Well, that handles a lot of water, obviously, but just remember, the catch basin that you have has only a 15-inch exit pipe going out of it. So my 15-inch pipe's feeding your catch basin. And your catch basin on the right side of the street, which I asked numerous times to try to find out if that catch basin was piped down along that side of the street or did it cross the street and come into the catch basin, I refer to, I'm sorry, as in front of my property. And it does. So you have a 12-inch pipe coming out of a catch basin on the right side of the street, dumping into the only catch basin on the left side of the street, and then expecting to have the water that comes from above going in that same catch basin. And it's not going to handle it. So it's undersized, inadequate, and I'm not an engineer, but I've been doing this for 40 years and I know what works and what doesn't work. So that pretty much wraps it up. That's... I know that everybody from Land Use was very understanding. And oh, one very important point. And I'm not patting myself on the back, but for as long as I've owned the land, I have, you might say, maybe I've been sort of a road agent on that little piece of property in front of my pasture, but I've mowed it with a lawnmower to keep it mowed. And it treats the water that comes down out of my upper culvert and down the edge of the road before it goes into that catch basin. Because when it goes into that catch basin, it goes through 200 feet of 15-inch plastic pipe that the town installed and drops directly into the brook. So I want to emphasize the importance of the quality of water that goes into that catch basin before it does get discharged. Because I do believe that's very important because it goes into a brook that goes in a Great Brook Village pond. So there's where some of the responsibility comes to making sure that... So there's been suggestions made. Maybe we may need to make more of a ditch there. Maybe we need to make a riprap ditch before I build my walls. I don't... Again, this, I'm not telling you how to make the drainage. It's not my problem. But you do have to remember that the water dumps into the brook. And so for all these years, it's worked fine. But now, due to the amount of flow that's coming off, of course, we had leaves. We had... Well, like I said, Land Use should be here to speak to it.
Well, I would say, from what I'm hearing at this point, is it's actually going to be the gentleman's with land, with planning. And I assume they're... Is he going before planning or the ARC committee or?
He's been to ARC.
Oh, okay.
Well, he may have now, but he did come to the planning board last month.
Okay.
But he omitted step one, the ARC meeting. So when he got there, they turned him away and said, come back, go to the ARC meeting and start over.
All right. So I guess...
Because there are some issues with that property now, major issues.
Okay.
Because his cutting was four times more than what he said it was going to be. When they... It was indicated to be selective cut and they selected every tree.
Okay. But this isn't really the selectmen's...
No, it isn't.
It's a planning...
But it is a community issue now.
Sure, of course, of course.
That cutting has created a bigger problem. We had a problem. Now we got a bigger problem.
Okay.
I missed... I did miss that planning board meeting, as I've been told. And that was due to situations beyond my control at the time. I wasn't ready to participate in meetings. But I will not miss another meeting now for the next two months because we have some very important ones coming up. But I did review...
One second.
The application is scheduled to come before the planning board on July 27th. Mr. Anderson.
He's been to the ARC, another one?
Yeah, been to the ARC.
Okay, no. Okay, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but okay. All right.
Mr. Anderson, this is when, let's just say, the flag popped up, when I did start to pay attention. Because I had expressed my concerns months ago when the cutting went on that I says... And I expressed that in Land Use, that, you know, this is going to be a serious issue when the water that's going to come off the site now at a high rate of speed. So I reviewed, and again, I didn't make the planning board meeting, but I did review the ARC meeting because I said, that's the chance, which, you know, I was on the planning board for three years, that's the chance for the town officials to have their chance to say that they have concerns. Well, in that meeting, I read that Ms. Baldwin, Ms. Lipson, Mr. Clamart, Mr. Black indicated they do not presently have any questions or concerns. So I found that concerning at the time, unfortunately. Because I was hoping somebody was going to say, well, what about the water flow that's going to... Increased water flow that's going to come down off there. So and again, I'm not placing the blame. So yes, Mr... He totally understands. He has to come up with a drainage plan now and a retention, just like the Dollar General did. The state didn't accept their water. And I get that and it's going to happen. But again, my biggest thing is, is we need to make sure the minimal drainage system we have now stays functional. And that's all I have to say about it.
All right. Okay. I guess we really have to wait till the planning, I mean, the planning board meeting. And I assume they will address the amount of water, the whatever.
It's a shame they can't be here now.
Well, Mr. Ball is available on Zoom. They were both scheduled to be off today, unfortunately. Could not change their plans. But Rick is available on the...
But the cutting was discussed by myself as the representative from the select board to the planning people.
All right.
Went while it was ongoing, not after it was gone, while it was ongoing.
So while I am here, though, I'd like, because you obviously have a lot to do with this decision as to how it's going to be handled, whether or not... I don't know if the pipe has been cut.
We don't really have a lot to say until...
No, no, not with his. No, no, no. Still, the catch basins are the town's and not his.
Well, I guess we have to... Right, but I think we have to...
And they have not been working because they've been frozen for two winters solid.
Well, you just said the pipe just needs to be cut off, right?
Well, I don't know if it's been cut off yet, but...
Well, I'm just saying, that's what you just said. I mean, I, you know, I'm not...
Well, just so we can recap that, though, when I went in this spring with the pitches again after being frozen for the second winter, which I do believe demonstrates patience on my part that I...
Well, I guess my question to you is if it was frozen, did it... What damage did it do to your property? If the pipe was frozen, what damage did it do to your property?
You don't understand that the 15-inch pipe that's frozen is the discharge from the catch basin that catches the town's drainage on Dearborn Street.
Okay, but I guess...
So if your culvert, if your catch basins near your home froze, the top of them, what damage would it do?
Right.
The water wouldn't go in them, right?
Right, but you said it's been frozen for two winters.
It goes down the edge into my property and froze my farm gate into a foot of ice. We had pictures of it.
Well, that's what I was asking. It just, you know...
But my biggest problem was, is when I went in and expressed concern about it this year, I was told I'm not fixing it.
Yeah.
Those are the words I got. I'm not fixing it.
All right.
So that's where you need to handle that part of it.
All right.
That's not my part.
So I guess we have to wait till your meeting on the 27th. Well, and basically, you're meeting...
Thank you.
You're welcome. Your meeting on the 27th. Mr. Anderson, I'm sorry. I just had a brain cramp, all right? That's between you and the planning board have to come up with the game plan, which I assume, and I'm only assuming, will involve whatever the drainage situation and how they handle it.
We have a two-fold problem.
Right, we, yeah.
We had a problem and now we've got a worse problem.
Rick would like to comment.
Okay. Are we going to be able to hear him, though?
He will be submitting a stormwater management plan as part of his site plan.
I can't hear him.
Can you not hear me?
I can hear you, Rick. And what Rick just said is he will be submitting a stormwater drainage plan as part of his site plan.
All right.
He's probably going to need an alteration of trade permit from this department.
That's Mr. Anderson.
Yes, correct.
But I have a question for him.
Okay. John has a question, Rick.
Does he have... Does Rick have a plan for the town issue? Now, before Mr. Anderson logged this property for the last two years, with Mr. Sturgeon saying that the drain wasn't working before the logging operation happened. So there is a problem before as well as it's been made a little worse. The drains freeze. Does Rick have an issue? Is he working on a plan to fix that?
Thank you, Mr. Pike. I would like to be very clear, and I think I was, but just in case I'm not, I want to be very clear that this problem with Mr. Anderson, and he, when we met a week ago, he said he wishes he'd met me sooner. And he says, I wouldn't have cut so many trees. He cut trees according to the minutes of the ARC meeting. If you should read them, I would suggest you read the minutes of the ARC meeting. That was for security purposes and he wouldn't have cut it so heavy. Well, we have all observed the cutting going on and I knew then there was going to be issues. But I knew from being on the planning board three years that before anything happens, they're going to have to address. But thank you, Mr. Pike. The ongoing two-year issue that we've had is what I'm really here about today. Not Mr. Anderson, because I know, I have total confidence in our planning board to make sure that when he comes out of here with whatever approvals he has, there'll be plenty of, you know, things that he'll agree to and he'll have to do just like everybody else has done because we have a great planning board. So...
Well, and obviously, my concern is, it's fine that we have a water issue at this point. That property hasn't been stumped yet. When the stumps come out of it, it could, it's going to exacerbate that.
Exactly. Exactly. The site has a lot of lives on it. It's very impervious and he understands that. So...
He will need an alteration of terrain plan from DES as part of this process.
Thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Pike.
So my question...
Rick, did you hear John's question?
It was going in and out. I'm not sure that I heard it.
He was inquiring about what, if any, plans had been looked at regarding the actual size of the culvert and drainage on the... That is the town's relative to the freezing problem that we've had, that Mr. Sturgeon reported for the past couple of years and so forth. And I don't know, we certainly...
Not that I'm aware of.
We certainly didn't talk about that specific problem. Yes, last Friday when we met, we talked primarily about the drainage and the riprap that Mr. Sturgeon had put in.
Kevin's lived there all his life. We only had the problem the last two years, for whatever reason. And something's changed. Either something in the ground's changed, something's broken, something's wrong. Whether we have to put a camera up, the thing, whatever. I don't know what's wrong. But if it's been there, those pipes have probably been in there 10, 15 years anyway. And if that be the case, why the last two did it freeze? So something has to have possibly changed at the ground or something. Something's causing this problem. He wants to...
Craig?
We did put a camera up that pipe. There's nothing wrong with the pipe. It needs to be cut off because it's freezing. And that pipe is not overflowed and it hasn't been an overflowing issue, even with that pipe freezing.
Okay. All right. Well, obviously, Rick Ball's going to look at that whole situation.
I agree that the best course of action at this point would be for Rick and Craig to look at that and discuss it. And if the culvert is extending over the water and needs to be cut off, that would be something I would think that Craig's department could take care of to make sure that gets done.
Yeah.
And then they can discuss...
And then obviously, his, Mr. Anderson's site, what you've got to go through will help to determine. Okay. All right. Good. Okay. Thank you. Well, you'll be in on the 27th then to the planning board. All right. Yes. Mr. Anderson.
Hi, I'm Gary Anderson. I just was here to listen in. Kevin had told me that Dearborn Street was on the agenda. Obviously, my property is a big part of that.
Yep.
First and foremost, both Craig and Kevin have been super helpful for me. I just want to say that I'm here to work with the town on any issues that are going on. I felt that I've been being really transparent the whole time. And this is the first that I've heard that there was something with the intent to cut that didn't match what actually was cut. I had used the term "clear cut" with, with planning from the get-go over the phone. I wish that I said that via email, but I don't think this was ever a surprise. You know, I called several people before I cut. Had I known that this would have turned into a bigger issue, it would have been handled much differently. But that being said, the trees, I can't put them back. I think in the grand scheme of things, the, my overall plan going there would, could very likely involve a retention pond of some sort. I think my property is already a host to a lot of the runoff coming down the hill. So I'm totally open to working with the town and having...
Well, that will be with the planning, all right?
Yes, okay.
That's kind of, that's not really, that's not necessarily us. That will be something that you will work through planning with and obviously the state and those types of things.
I guess the only clarification I'd like to make in reference to that meeting is I'm only on the agenda for a subordinate dwelling unit inside, but I have engaged an engineer to start working on the overall site plan. So I just want to be clear, that site plan for the exterior of the property, I put in for a conceptual so I could discuss the exterior of the property because I really can't talk to the planning board about, you know, what I'm doing without a conceptual on the agenda. So I put that in to discuss. But yeah, just so you know, the planning board meeting is not specifically for that, but I intend to discuss it.
Well, I think as a word of caution, I just wouldn't get a machine in there and start stumping until you've got everything figured out.
100%.
Because that could...
That can't happen until he has an alteration of treatment.
Right, because that could...
Well, and I think...
I don't think anything's going to happen.
...down in at the bottom.
Your attempts at the planning board, having sat on that board that night, and I believe your exact words, just give me the final approval and I'll make everything all right.
I'm...
That's what you said. So what's going to happen, the process is going to go step by step now. Because quoting you, when you said that, that kind of changed the meeting a little bit and...
Sent a red flag?
Sent a red flag up and they said, wait a minute, we're not going to do this. So I think anything you're going to do with that property, you're going to go at their pace at this point.
Yep.
And only being the selectmen's rep, but I've been on that board for quite a while, the alteration of terrain will probably happen before any conceptual of anything happens. That would be my interpretation because it is one piece of property now. And with this, so if you start stumping it, what we might have is a small problem right now would be a horrendous problem.
Yeah, definitely not going to stump anything. I did, just for clarification, I missed the beginning part where you mentioned something about me saying, just get the approval.
That's correct, sir. When you came up to the microphone and you met some opposition regarding all the applications because in your request, and I didn't bring it with me, but about every ordinance we had on the books, you asked for a waiver for. You had two pages of waiver requests. Well, when you get done with those, I believe it was Mr. The chairman, Mr. Harris, asked you, you know, you got all these requests in to waive all the ordinances and laws of the town of Belmont and of the planning board. He said, you know, you got to start with one of them. And you quote said, just give me the approval and I'll see that they're done or completed. Well, that doesn't work that way. So unfortunately, the responsibility falls to you to show them. So I think what's going to happen, and I can't swear to it because I don't carry the vote of everyone there, but this application for the alternate, this permit you need from the state and the drainage, they will be taken care of before you do much of anything with it going forward. That would be my, not to get you all excited, but be prepared to be prepared to show that. Because this property is, it's in entirety now. It's not like it's a two-piece. It's all one. So whatever you do to it affects the whole piece of property. So if you're looking to put a, I know you're looking for a residence inside the building. You got a body shop inside the building. You got a garage inside the building. You got a lot of things you wanted to waive. But I think it's going to come to you, so I'm giving you a fair warning, that this permit for the altering, whatever the state and what are the planners tell you have to do, it's going to have to be completed or bonded or something first before the next step happens.
Okay.
That would be my advice.
And I'll ask for an audio of the minute so I know what you're talking about. And I apologize if I came off the wrong way with that. If I recall, the waiver that I was requesting, that every waiver that I requested on there was suggested and, and recommended by planning except for ARC. I think that was the only waiver that I'd requested. And my thought was that I'd received a non-necessary hardship because I started applying for that in January. And I did miss one ARC meeting, but I didn't think that missing one ARC meeting should result in six months to get an approval. But I think what I was asking is that I could satisfy anything that the ARC asked of me after the fact because there was an ARC meeting just a few days, excuse me, just a few days after that meeting. So I wasn't looking to get, you know, all the tape removed and I can do whatever I want. It was really, if I got a conditional approval to see ARC and then heed any advice that they had, that I could do that and it would save me 30 days. But either way, it doesn't matter now. I just want you to know that it's not my intention to get away with things or that kind of thing.
Unfortunately, that's the way it came off.
Okay.
If you were sitting in the audience or at the table listening to what you said, and that's when Mr. Harris retorted to you saying, we have a three-step process. The ARC committee, then you come to the planning board for a preliminary, then to a final. And because you did miss the first ARC committee or the ARC committee that they had you scheduled for, you missed the first step and that's why they asked you to go back to it.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
If I could just comment, we did note each of the staff that had been out to the site, which would be both Dari, Rick, Craig, I've actually driven by myself, that there are, Mr. Sturgeon did create two riprap structures on the property. They're, they're...
Water bars?
Rock bars, I guess you'd call them, at the entrances or the exits of your driveways. And the concern was that if the, that if that was to stop the drainage coming off the hill from Mr. Anderson's property and it went out into the right of way, that if it caused a problem, we would have to ask you to remove those because that is not, it's not legal to divert water from private property onto public property by the means of a structure. So just, just keep that in mind, Kevin. We all agree that they should be left there until such time as this is addressed.
Well, now, that, and I hope I was clear enough that just remember, it's not... Mr. Anderson has his responsibilities and I believe he's going to step up and, you know, take care of them. But it is also town water that, the third place that the town's drainage dumps onto my property is, goes into that culvert that I did put some riprap to. And the riprap, the water should still be able to pass through it. It's going to stop the leaves and the limbs and the stuff that comes through my 15-inch pipe. Just remember, my 15-inch pipe overflowed. It didn't take the water that came the last two storm events. It ran. There's still traces of leaves inside my pasture, outside my pasture. So I couldn't hear when I was over there next to the air conditioner humming in my ear, but I was, I thought I heard a statement made that, that that 15-inch pipe that's been in for 14 or 15 years has never overflowed. Did I hear that correctly or?
That's my, my indication from you was that it...
No, no, no. That statement was made from somebody that got up to the mic and said that that had not ever overflowed. Well, the pipe didn't overflow because it was froze solid. Well, the, the pipe didn't overflow because it was froze solid. The catch basin that it's supposed to drain out of overflowed because if the pipe froze solid, common sense will tell you, it can't go down into the catch basin. So therefore then all the water comes down onto my property in front of my gate, so.
Well, that will all be, that's gonna have to be addressed by planning and then we'll go from there, so.
Well, and Rick and Craig will look at that.
Yep, yep, we have that scheduled, so they'll, they'll look at it along with obviously what they're dealing with, with this land up above.
So that you are totally up to speed too. About three or four years ago, I wanna say, I don't remember exactly when. So I told you that the water exits from the edge of Dearborn Street into Mr. 48 Dearborn Street. And there was also a little ditch put in that does go directly to that culvert that I'm talking about that I put in, which made total common sense rather than try to run it down to the edge of the road. And Dearborn Street on that side is pretty well, unfortunately, falling apart because right underneath the edge of the road is an eight-inch water main. So the road is compromised, it's breaking up. So if you was ever to try to dig a ditch alongside that road down that side now, unfortunately, you'd lose what asphalt you had left because the grass and the material it is holding the road together. And there's also a problem that the right culvert, now my son can come in if you'd like a witness, when he went to.
Going up the hill.
If you'd like my son to come in and make a statement that the catch basin on the other side of the road did overflow because that pipe comes into my catch basin, which was frozen. The pipe going out of that catch basin was frozen. That catch basin overfroze, I mean overflowed, ran across the road during a storm event and that's when the pickup went off the road and come crashing into my pasture. So this isn't, this is, this was seen. This is, this happened. And on the right side going up Dearborn Street, the other problem is, and it was a neighbor that I love dearly, their lawn goes right to the edge of the road. There's no, no drainage on the road from that catch basin to what goes down around the corner. Cars are constantly bouncing off the guardrails. You can find directional lights, parts of fenders at any given time during the winter. So there's a lot of people have an issue on that last stretch of road before you get to the stop sign that's, I might say that's not a stop sign.
I'm gonna just make one statement to that because I have, I'm up on Dearborn Street quite a bit because I have a lady that I spend time with and I'm gonna tell you right now, it's a speeding issue as much as anything else.
Oh, I.
We all know, it's on all the roads. They're bouncing off in everything.
If you want, if you want interesting footage to watch, I have cameras that's been monitoring now for months. You can see how many cars, and again, you've had a man stand here years ago that owned the factory, I think three owners before, and talked for half an hour about that it's a bypass.
Oh, yeah.
It's the cut across. People don't wanna go to the stop sign. So it's an important road. I guess my whole key here is it's how important a road it is because of the traffic volume. So the drainage has to work. That's all I hear about, so.
Well, we're gonna, obviously a lot of that will be initiated by what we're dealing with here, so.
All right, thank you.
All right. Okay. The next item is solid waste collection and disposal. Jing, I read that.
Yes. So we have had a number of individuals contact us in regard to the Saturday hours that were eliminated at the facility located on Route 140 and they had eliminated them due to the COVID-19 issues. That was why they had eliminated them. They were doing one Saturday a month, which was the second Saturday of the month. Prior to that, they had been doing every Saturday. So we, Mr. Allen and Peter Burnham came in and we held a meeting to talk about that as well as some of the other issues with solid waste. So what they, they, at this point, they do not have a, an immediate plan to reopen on Saturday mornings. Their concern with the facility is that it is not a retail facility and it is not set up to take cash, checks, credit cards and so forth.
May I interrupt?
Sure.
I personally have paid cash.
Yeah.
I personally have left checks and they weren't set up. The people in the, in that building out where they, where you dumped the stuff, took the cash, went and asked for a receipt, we don't give any.
Yeah.
They did.
Yeah.
They took it.
Yeah.
But their contract with us was, wait a minute, their contract said we had, we could dump this stuff there. That's the problem. We, we don't, I, I read all this and if you go to, so you're gonna tell your customers, your taxpayers, you're gonna drive to Concord to get rid of it.
If I can finish what they're looking at doing. So what they're considering, and there isn't a specific item in the contract, I will say that, we, we weren't able to include that because it is a private facility, but what they are looking at is the possibility of how they can structure reopening for that second Saturday a month or creating a process where the taxpayer such as yourself will call Town Hall and say, "I have a couch, a chair, a refrigerator. I'd like them picked up." We'll say it's going to be X, X and X, this will be the fee. They bring the check to Town Hall. I, we contact Casella. They'll go out on a specific day each month and pick up these bulky items at the property owner's home. If they get to the home and there's 20 items there and they only made a reservation for three, they'll leave the items that weren't taken care of.
Out of the reservation.
So they, they are doing this in other communities and so they're looking to potentially do that for us. So he was going to go back, look at their, talk with their drivers, determine if they'd have enough staff to accommodate that and then get back to us.
So it won't just be, it won't be on the weekend that they do it?
No, it would be if they literally, they'd pick a day. It might be Tuesdays.
Yeah.
Um, once a month on Tuesday, the second Tuesday of every month. You know, people will still have to, they'll, the property owner will have to make the effort to call Town Hall, find out what the fee is gonna be for the item they wanna drop off, what their address is and will take care of it. We've, we've already discussed the fact that that needs to go strictly through the selectman's office. Myself, Alicia will not go through the town clerk's office, it will have nothing to do with them, they will not be involved in taking any money or any fees or any of that. It'll come through our office, we'll make the arrangements.
So if I, if I call and say, "Three items," can I give you my credit card number?
Well, we don't take credit cards at Town Hall. You'd have to bring a check or.
You'd have to bring a check.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But, you know, if they call well enough in advance.
Yes.
Um, I think it would be easier for the resident. And, you know, we can, so we're waiting to hear back from them in hopes that that will happen.
And there are, and it looked like they're talking with the same program in Laconia and Northfield?
Laconia and Northfield, they're talking about the TOTA program.
Oh, okay.
So they're talking about automating trash collection with TOTAs in lieu of the.
My understanding in Laconia, and I may be wrong, that when you register your vehicle, you're asked if you'd like to pay $5 in addition to your tax, into your.
Registration.
If you're registering a car and that goes towards your dump fee and you can bring your stuff to the, up off Mary Center Road when you got a refrigerator or a TV.
They still pay a fee though. They still pay a fee to do that. And we used to be part of that, we used to allow them to do that, but Laconia stopped it and didn't want to continue it with our people, letting our people bring things to that facility, so they weren't.
I think that system would be better, that would be better than taking your time and the accounting time to, if they're, they're in the trash business, they should handle the trash business. There's only so, so far we can stretch you people and like they said, they gotta see how they're gonna handle it.
Well, what, what's really interesting is, is they typically on a Saturday, if they get that Saturday that they were open, if they get one or two Belmont residents, that's a lot, who's coming in is Northfield and Tilton. And it's, when we get complaints, we're not getting them from a huge variety of people. It's typically one or two of the same individuals that are, that have bulky waste that they're trying to get rid of and they contact us to, to make a complaint about the fact that the facility isn't open. So I don't know that we're gonna be overwhelmed. We may get more business because if people know that they can call and make a reservation.
People are getting overwhelmed on the back roads. I mean, there's.
Well, if they can call and make a.
Dump them out on the, you know, by the, the fair, the fairgrounds. They dump, that's a dumping road, they just back in there and dump and leave the stuff.
But you're gonna get that, John. You know, it, it blows my mind, you draw, not that I've been out that much, but you go down a road and there's a big couch, free, big couch sitting beside the road that's been rained on three, four times and I swear they're just leaving it there hoping that the town is gonna pick it up. We're not picking that up, all right? If it's on someone's property and basically if they put it on town property, as far as I'm concerned, it should be pushed back onto their property. They should not, and if it is on.
I agree.
If it's on town property, they should be notified to.
You don't think they can run it right across the farm?
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know if it's still there.
No, I don't think it is.
I did direct the, the company.
I think basically if someone puts a couch out in front of their house and it's on town property, they oughta be notified to get it off in town property. It's not our responsibility to pick up their couch. That drives me crazy. You know, it's, you know, if they wanna put a sign out and say, "Free, put it on your property, not on town property, not in the town right-of-way." And I think they should be notified. And that's my two cents worth on that. I just, you just see that stuff. And I think obviously through all of this with more people home, if they're no different than me, tend to be cleaning out corners that you haven't cleaned out for years and there's been more stuff out by the road. Now, a lot of it people pick up if it's halfway decent, but yeah.
Trust me, it's frustrating for us because the more it sits there, you have a heavier debt.
Oh, of course, it's getting so waddly. Oh, sure does. But it's not, but it's not the town's responsibility to take care of Mr. Smith's couch that he chose to put out beside the road. It's his responsibility. You're right. It's gonna get worse and worse. Right.
I think it's a good business getting it. Buy, buy, use up gravel pit, put a couple of big containers in there, put a gate, come in, we're gonna charge you, what do you got there in that car? But they will because they gotta get rid of it.
But then that requires having somebody on staff there.
Right, and it costs us more than $10 to get rid of it.
You understand that? So you said, well, you, you don't think they're giving you any great bargaining?
Oh, no.
I mean, I, I used a fee of $10. I just said, I picked a number. I mean, a TV was $50 down here. That's why you're throwing, now I understand why they were throwing them outside the road. It was $50 for 25-inch TV. Yep.
Yeah. Don't say that too loud. We'll end up with another trouble.
We do budget, we do budget.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
It's a, it's a real problem. It seems to be a real, it's more of a problem than we, than we hear about because only out of 10 people, three may complain. And the other ones, they just go home and mumble.
Well, they're looking at, at both options and they will get back to us and they're also reviewing the, putting together the cost estimate for the TOTA program. I will tell you the one thing that David brought to my attention, or actually his site foreman, which is Mr. Burnham, and Craig actually confirmed it, or not confirmed it, but we discussed it as well, is that there is a lot of trash that's being put out at the curbside that is not coming from Belmont. What's happening is someone may have a party at their home and they know Belmont has curbside collection and their friends may have been at their house and they take their trash home with them or they're coming from Concord and they see it's Thursday and it's trash day and they drop their bags off in front of, we're getting a ton, Craig said that.
Ask them.
Yeah.
Ask them.
What?
Oh, I was just, I put my garbage out the other day and I usually put it out at nighttime and I get up in the morning, I looked out there and there's a big green bag.
Yeah.
Sitting beside my.
So.
I said, "How the hell did that get there?"
Yeah. So the TOTA program, if we were to go to a TOTA program, would eliminate that. They would not be able to do it because all they're gonna pick up at your residential property.
But, okay, but what happens if, if.
You just leave it.
Somebody, somebody leaves that green bag, he calls the police.
While you call the police department or you put it in your, it will stop it because they'll know that they can't put a bag out beside a TOTA. I mean, we'll do a, we would do a campaign to tell people, you know, this is Belmont's trash. Our residents get a single TOTA. If there's anything else out there, it, you know, it's not gonna get picked up. You know, multi-families would get more than one TOTA, that type of thing, but I mean, we've gotta eliminate it because we're paying for every single ton.
Right.
That gets disposed of in this town.
But that's the first time it's ever happened, but I was really shocked.
Oh, yeah.
And I went down and I, I was gonna look in and I go, "Oh, I don't wanna touch it." Huh?
We'll see.
A lot of these people that have like little, little side businesses and, you know, they take their trash and.
They'll bring it home instead of, sure.
Yep. We had a guy in here two years ago.
Paying for it, paying for it.
I can't think of any of the road, very close on Fair, Lamprey Road, runs a little repair shop, so he told me how to get a dumpster. You couldn't get to that dumpster walking. It's out behind his garage, it's there, but he brings all his garage trash out and puts it right by the road and they pick it up.
Yeah.
Same with the Sweeneys, when they had it up there, we had to get after him pretty hard, so he'd take his from over here and put it up on Light Hill, where his apartment house is.
Yeah.
He'd go to that trouble to take his garbage up there.
Well, they, they are currently talking about going to automation with both Laconia and Northfield. The biggest problem they have right now these days is that they just can't get drivers. They just cannot get staff. They're, and it's, you know, it's hard work, it's heavy work, it's fraught with injuries and it's really become a, an issue. So they will get back to us with further information on that and I will keep after him regarding either reopen on Saturday or.
Or pick a day.
Or pick the day that you're gonna do this program, if you're gonna do it and we, at least try it. If it becomes overwhelming and it's too much, I mean, I don't, I can't imagine it's gonna be, but it's hard to know. I mean, so, but. Craig wanted to just quickly update you on the, the truck. You had asked him for status on that last weekend. I know he has to leave. You, you.
Yep, could be.
Okay.
I did call my salesman from, like I said, at this point in time, we put an order in right now, we're looking at bill time of last week of September, early October. I'm not sure how long that bill time takes. But the bill time, we're probably 90 days up in the time to get the truck to quit, so how long we put it off, how long.
So he's telling you, you'd have a truck for January 1st?
Probably, yeah. And probably not have it for, no, I think, I don't know, things go good, I don't know how bad it is.
Well, if he says it's, the bill time, it's a two-week bill time.
Yeah.
And to get it here, then it's 90 days to put a body and a plow and stuff on it because they'll be backed up, so they're talking rest of the year.
That's a little, he said, "Check them on the price." Because when I did the pricing, I, I was fairly aggressive, I gave him a hundred and fifty. He said, "We'll stick with the same price."
What was that price?
Uh, 118.744.
Say that again?
118. Cabbage ass, 118.
What's the total price? What was the total price of the truck he quit?
Uh, 185. Take 185 and 100.
And what did we, what did we?
That's what I was gonna ask, to verify that, to get those, we had talked about leasing That's what I was gonna ask her, verify that, to get those, we had talked about leasing that, didn't we?
Yeah, yes, we were gonna lease.
We had requested them to look at, um,
Just to make sure the numbers were really, I thought it was closer to two hundred. At least I had that stuck in my head.
Yeah. Did we put a price that they voted on or did we just put it in?
No.
I don't remember, I don't remember. That's taxing me, that was back in.
Yeah.
I have, I'll have to pull it up, but I wanna think it was like one ninety. I think it's the number that we were using for her to quote us on the leasing was one ninety. But, I don't have it. Ah ha. actually, I had asked her to quote on one eighty-five.
Hey.
Now, is that gonna be like the fire truck, it has to be voted on each year because we lease it? No, alright, okay. Nope, just no, pass it.
It's a, just Payment goes into his operating budget.
Okay, alright. A line item, alright, yep. I probably should have known that, but I'm just, alright. So in other words, what you're looking for is us to say, order it? Is that where we're at at this point? Do we
I think we need to discuss that.
We need to discuss that?
I think we should.
Alright.
And that would be with Jean about the finances.
Alright.
I'm just scared that we did very
We just wanted an update on
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, I appreciate that.
Okay, cool.
We did very well with our first round of taxes, but
I know, I know. I'm so nervous about the second round. I agree. I agree.
I know we need the truck.
Yeah. Okay, alright. Very good, Craig. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Available for any further questions?
Yep, alright. Thanks. Okay, we'll go back to the L-Chip, Jean.
Yes, we received um, a two hundred dollar check from the L-Chip um, investment program, the Land and Community Heritage Investment Program for the Belmont Heritage Commission. Um, each year I complete the um, inventory report on behalf of the bandstand. Um, and I submit that to L-Chip. I basically take pictures and I write up a report on any maintenance that's done. And for doing that, they pay us or give us a um, a two hundred dollar um, annual check to go towards any repairs or work that's needed for the bandstand. So it's just accepting that and um, acknowledging that we'd be transferring it to the um, Heritage Commission.
So even though um, when we do repair to the bandstand, it comes out of our general
Uh, we have a line item in um, building, well, we set aside money in general government repairs. If it's anything major, we would go to the, the Heritage Commission and say, you know
Okay, alright.
We really have a motion for that. Yeah, just a motion to accept it and transfer it to the Heritage Commission.
Shaw moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Um, any other new business?
Yes, so we received um, notification from Primex that we are going to be receiving a premium holiday distribution for our workers' comp compensation program for two thousand nineteen in the amount of fifteen thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. Their intent is to apply that as a credit balance towards our two thousand twenty-one um, workers' comp bill. However, or we can request a check. So then it would show as just um, miscellaneous revenue in two thousand twenty. So I was looking for your input. In the past, we've taken the check because we didn't want to um, underinflate the cost of the insurance in the budget year.
Okay.
Because if we, if we, right now, the budget contains the amount that's going to be considered as default. If we reduce that and then we don't get a premium the following year, our risk is, is that. So that's basically been why we've chosen to take the check.
Take the check.
Makes sense, makes sense.
We have the same similar situation with our unemployment compensation. It's not very much, it's eight hundred and eighty-one or eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. So if you're good with that, I'll just have them send us a check. It's just um, makes more sense. Um, the other new business we have, as you'll see, is we've received a letter of resignation from our code enforcement and um, building inspector Steve Paquin. Um, he has submitted that to us um, with his last day being effective Tuesday, September first. Um, I did have an opportunity to have a, a fairly lengthy discussion with Steve and um, he really um, it, it, it's just, he's at a place in his life where he just, it's, he's gotta have a, have a reset and see where, where things go. So he has submitted that resignation, told them we'd be sorry to see him go. I think he's um, certainly done a good job for us, but um, he will be willing to, you know, help us out um, as we go through the search process. And then if there's any um, additional training towards the end. Um, but we can talk about, a little bit further about that under non-public. I did give you a draft ad. Um, I do have information from him, there was one thing I did want to share with you. That during the period, January first of two thousand nineteen to July eighteen of two thousand nineteen, we had eighty-five permits that were issued for a total of nine thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars in permit fees that the town received to, to review. For the same period in two thousand twenty, so to date, he has issued a hundred and eleven permits for a total permit fee of fourteen thousand dollars. Um, he had indicated to me on Thursday when we talked about it that the single family, um, the new permits for single family are up. So in the same period last year, he had two. So far to date, we've had eight. So the new family construction is up.
Up a little, yeah, yeah. Well, obviously that project on um, Levitt Road, yeah, yeah.
So what's he, what's he think, his workload is too high or, I mean, I
No, sir. No, 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 it's not that. It, it has nothing to do with the workload. I mean, he enjoys, building inspection has always been something he's enjoyed. And, and I'd rather, um, I'll go into it further with you um, in non-public. Um, I'll just say that, you know, I, I will, I will say one thing. And I think um, Assistant Chief Black um, echoed this comment when she was here a few weeks back at one of your meetings when we were talking about code enforcement. Um, code enforcement is a thankless job, very much like general assistants. And I think after a while, you really um, it, it really is just not something you want to do.
I don't remember anybody ever thanking me for doing this job.
Well, that's true too, John.
It's your job.
But anyways, so I'll, um, I, I can elaborate a little further in, in non-public, so.
Alright. So we, under, so no other new business? Now, um, and obviously under old business, we've discussed the truck and any other old business?
Yes, we have one additional item. Um, following your meeting last Wednesday,
Okay.
Um, Barrett Salter had sent an email and Chairman Mooney had suggested that we just catch up um, with the conversation this morning and I can let Barrett know. She had inquired at the meeting about whether or not the new heating system, the proposed heating system for the fourth floor would have a dehumidifying process to it. And Barrett had gotten back to us and indicated that it did, it did not. So is that an additional cost you would want him to pursue? Um, and so I'm looking for your, I
You know, I, I also think he, didn't he quote, didn't he put a price?
He did not on that. He did talk to us, he did make a, a comment about the, the flooring. So that was my next, yeah.
You know, it, no, it was, in my, it was just, it was just a question. It was an inquiry and I guess, I mean, in all re-
That is an outside system, am I correct? It's gonna be, it's not
Mini splits?
Yes.
Mini splits are vented outside, I believe.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
He, he explained that this will have a directional
And it's got some air changing, it has, yes. They talked about, they talked about the ten percent air change and I think that's huge.
And that's what the doctor had in his, so
Yeah.
I would say stick with what we
Stick with what he quoted, okay. And then the other thing was, he did get um, word back about repairing the epoxy floor. And the um, company quoted him approximately seven to eight dollars per square foot, which would amount to about ten to twelve thousand dollars. Um, we had, he had proposed the luxury vinyl tile, which was only seven thousand and we're still looking into the proposal from Mr. Clermont about the tiles. So I don't think we want to do the epoxy.
Oh, no.
Well, and I think that if you go with, with those big square cloth, you know, top, whatever, alright? That's gonna help with the echoing.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that
Both rooms are gonna have the echoing.
Huh?
Both rooms are gonna have
They are, so that's gonna absorb.
From the right, when you go in, from the elevator, the room to the right's gonna be worse because the ceiling's
I like the look of those big squares. They look nice and neat, I really like
Well, and like they said, if, if you had one that something happened, you tear it up and put a new one down.
Barrett was gonna
Okay, like, let them know he's gonna call me today.
Yeah.
Um, just so you know, uh, the phone people, PhD are, are coming tomorrow to um, talk about what's gonna be needed for Donna's office over there and the meeting rooms upstairs. Um, A and B's moving right along. I am having a heck of a time getting ahold of Atlantic Broadband. I have left messages, I have emailed them, I've emailed their sales department trying to get them together to determine what's gonna be necessary to provide adequate wifi and so forth in that building. So I'm working on it, but they are, they've been, I can't believe, I, nothing.
I, probably if it was me, I'd get in my car and drive up there.
Well, I did call their office and, and still didn't get any, yeah, but
I'd probably still get in my car and drive up. Knock on the door and say, I need to see somebody. I mean, you might not get anywhere, but you might be surprised.
It's crazy.
Alright, um, nothing else?